All right. Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. This is our first meeting after elections. We have a new member with us this evening, Ms. Melissa Quinn. And as such, our previous chair was Amy Lehman. So we are currently without a chair. We will square that away this evening. And so as vice chair, we'll just start with our pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as usual, we will begin by reading the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are responsible and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next would be our time for public comment. I don't see anyone in the studio. Ian, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Wesley trying to get on, but don't know her name.
That's Vanessa, one of our student advisors.
Yeah. I think it might be our student representative.
That makes sense. Okay, all right, seeing none, we could move to our Student Advisory Council if we get Vanessa online.
I think we're, could be Vanessa, Julia, and Ahmed will be coming probably from sports practice or running in the door. Yeah, perfect.
Good timing.
Hi Vanessa, can you hear us?
Hello.
How are you?
Yes, I'm good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Thank you so much.
Ahmed said that he was running late, so I think he might be showing up a little later in this meeting.
Okay.
So I'll start with the updates then. So under academics, Wakefield will be hosting the SATs this coming Saturday. The schedule for final assessments is during May 21st to the 24th. Final assessments for grade nine through 11 are June 13th to the 18th. They were shared with students and family this week, so the end of the school year is coming quickly. And AP exams will also start next week. For other school news, the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield officially released the application, which is due June 1st. I already filled mine out. The process was really quick and simple, so I'd recommend everyone to apply. And then Monday, we welcome back the 19 students and two teachers who spent the last few weeks studying abroad, a part of the Swiss exchange program. If you'd like to see any of their adventures, join their Instagram page at WMHS exchange. And then today, seniors participated in the Credit for Life Fair. So I was there as a senior, and I thought it was really helpful to learn more about kind of like how to finance things. And it helped, I think, students kind of get a better idea for like what to expect when we become adults and post-college.
That's great. Is this a yearly Credit for Life? Is that a yearly program?
Yes, it is.
Awesome, that sounds fantastic.
Vanessa, did you see the, have you seen the Swiss exchange blog?
I have, I read a little bit of it, but not too much. It seemed really cool. I know they visited like the Swiss Alps. And then they also attended like classes with their exchange student, and they got to live with them. So it was really cool to like learn about their experience overseas.
That's great.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions for Vanessa? All right, thank you so much Vanessa. Feel free to stick around if you like. Love having your voice.
Thank you.
I think next we have a consent agenda.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the April 9th, 2024 school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the April 25th, 2024 school committee policy and communications subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do you want to do a?
I have a question before you do a roll call or anything?
Yes.
In the, in the packet of the minutes from April 9th, there was a typo. The father's name was Michael Carl, not Michael Collins. So that was both under the guest as well as in section 8A twice. And then if we're noting that, we might as well fix where we said neighborhood school later on in motion one, just to be consistent and say neighborhood Christian School to have the correct name.
Understood. Yep, we can, we can make those edits. So do you like to amend the motion?
Sure. I'd like to amend the consent agenda motion to correct the meeting minutes from the April 9th, 2024 school committee meeting to correct Father Michael Carl's name from Michael Collins to say Michael Carl. And in motion one, to correct the school name to be Neighborhood Christian School.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Judy, do you want to do a roll call?
Ms. Quinn? Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Collarin?
Yes.
And Dr. Fiscadlo?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on, section seven would be superintendent's remarks and reports.
Thank you very much. I just have a few comments tonight on the agenda. I'd like to invite Tim O'Brien, our director of facilities, up to the table to give, to start off with a little update on facilities. Specifically, the high school. We want to try to do this, I was talking to Tim today. We want to try to do this, you know, once a month. Or if there's a major change, maybe even once a month every meeting, right? And so just to keep everyone informed of what's happening here.
Pull the chair for him.
Careful what you ask for. And so it's great to have you here, Tim.
My pleasure.
So I wanted to start out, our TV department is, we've been working together since the beginning of the project. And, you know, we've been thinking of ideas of how we can sort of have a time lapse video of the construction and, and give people sort of an impression of what's, what's going on out here behind the high school. You don't get to see a lot from the street. So John Beris and Chris Constantine had the idea of flying a drone around the project. And it's going to be fine tuned as we go along to fly the same path. But this was the initial flight that was done earlier this week. We appreciate, certainly appreciate their, their efforts here. And we're going to show you about a minute and 25 seconds of that film. Take a look at the right side of the screen, you'll see me waltzing across the room. Also in your top right corner, you'll be able to see that drop off area for Woodville has been divided with Jersey barriers. Sorry, I should have commented on that earlier. Now we've, we've moved past it. But it's, it's just interesting to see the amount of work that's happened in 30 days. We have to, you know, you have to hand it to Bond. They've been organized, they've been, you know, deliberate. They've just done everything in a step, careful, step-by-step process. Safety is number one for them, which of course we appreciate. And I just want to say Jerry Hammersley, who is a Wakefield resident and an abutter of the project, is the general superintendent, superintendent of the project. And just the, the experience that he brings and his, his attitude towards the project and him being a father himself, he, he approaches everything he does with the same care that we would if we were doing it ourselves. And we just appreciate that. So we don't have to remind him of things that we're concerned about. He's, he's already way ahead of us on that. So we certainly appreciate that. So we've got a glimpse there of, of what's been going on. There's been a lot of excavation work. Some of that excavation work has restricted us from accessing WCAT and the fieldhouse from the normal path that we had. The rest of this week and early next week, they'll be working hard on restoring that path so that we'll be able to actually come walking down back here and have our normal access to the building. We're looking forward to restoring that, so we're not making so many adjustments to how we access certain areas of the building. A few things I want to mention, construction related. Monthly throughout the project, we'll be monitoring air quality. Bond has, has contracted a company to come in every 30 days. They go into classrooms, large gathering spaces, and monitor air quality. And so far, we've gotten nothing but, but great reports. Just something with the amount of dust that this excavation kicks up. We just want to make sure that we're, we've got a close eye on that. As part of the project as well, additional air filtration was added to our rooftop units. These are high-quality filters that are making sure that we're not just bringing dust into the building at all times. So just a careful consideration for, for the air that's, that's being breathed inside the high school while this, this work is being done. Parking is a constant conversation piece for us. I've been working closely with Amy McLeod and Joe Mulaney. Joe is out there in those lots every single morning, making sure that our, our students and staff are able to come in and find a, a place to park comfortably and with no issue. I think, again, as I've said before, parking is not perfect here, but it's getting better. Some of these early growing pains that we had are improving. We've mounted some signage up at the upper lot to say permit parking only, which will allow our students to better, you know, exclusively use that lot as it's intended. So we're working, we're waiting, we should have by the end of this week, parking passes that we've ordered to hand out to students who will be parking in those areas. And that way, we'll be able to better monitor who's who and, and where our issues are. So we're, we're getting better every day on the parking piece. We've worked closely with the police department, Lieutenant Joe Anderson and our SROs, with temporarily eliminating some of the parking restrictions in front of the high school. So from the Hemlock roadside closer down to Water Street, past the Woodville, that'll accommodate some more high school students. You know, and we are aware too of some of the complications that, that that may cause with Woodville drop off, and I'll have more to come on the Woodville drop off. But we're, we're trying to fit everybody in and make sure that everybody's got a place to be and, and they're able to get into our buildings. So moving on to Woodville, as I stated when we were playing the video, the high school side of the Woodville parking lot, if you can picture it, was split with Jersey barriers. So that we're able to have a direct construction site access lane on the right-hand side and a Woodville loop for drop off on the left-hand side. There were curb cuts completed on Farm Street. So there's a large opening there for two lanes, you know, at least two lanes of traffic. Myself, Matt Carter, some of his staff, and a few of our SROs, both Kelly and Matt, have been available in the mornings around 8:20, 8:30 range to go set those cones up, make sure that the flow of that traffic is, is what it needs to be. In the early stages, it was taking us about 15 minutes to get everybody through and everybody dropped off, which is about an addition of five minutes to that. As of this morning, we did it in nine minutes. So drastic improvement. I think that that's both due to the way that the cones have been set up and the folks who have been there to direct, direct traffic and let people know what the new situation is. And, and of course, it's, it's parents getting used to see, you know, seeing what, what the flow is and what's the best time to be there and, and how we're, we're making those improvements. And so we just appreciate all the Woodville parents who have been patient with us. And, and it's getting much better every single day. So we're certainly excited about that. Looking forward to next steps on the project. The next big piece of the puzzle is the drainage culvert. So we'll see in the coming weeks, Gwiggly, who's the site court, site contractor, digging across what used to be our rear parking lot and installing a large drainage culvert. The plan for that is to dig up until they reach the Burnett Field. And then of course, we're waiting for the softball season to, to be over before we continue across the outfield and connect to the drainage outlay area. So that's what we'll start to see in, in the coming weeks. It's still a very dynamic site. We're still getting used to their presence. But I think as a school community, we're doing a really good job of adjusting to what's an incredibly large-scale project. So I'm impressed with, with the way we've handled it. I'm impressed, like I said, Amy and Joe have been, have been in it every single day with me. And we appreciate everybody who's involved. I asked Jerry Hammersley today if he was getting sick of hearing from me. And, and he laughed and he, he said, it's refreshing to have somebody who's so interested in it. I said, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to be so nice to me. You let me know when I'm, when I'm, when I wear out my welcome and I'll, and I'll back off. But it's been, it's been a pleasure so far. And we're looking forward to the, the coming weeks and the next stages. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Pete?
I had a couple of comments. One, I think the history and showing the construction and getting videos of it is awesome. I think that's something that the town will have, you know, forever to cherish as we look at the, you know, building handful of years from now when it's built. So I think that's awesome. And then, you know, different part of facility update is I just want to give my appreciation for voting day. I saw you out there bright and early, putting signs up, preserving spots. And all I heard was positive feedback from people on their ability to find parking. So, you know, I know you worked hard to put those signs up there. And I saw you out there early in the morning. And it was definitely appreciated by people in town. I want to give my thanks.
Thank you. I think we've established best practices when it comes to large-scale events at Galvin. And I think we'll see a lot more of that when it comes to voting and, and other events as well, where, where it makes sense to accommodate a larger number of vehicles. We're going to have a plan for that and we're not going to miss from here forward.
Kevin?
You talked a little bit, Tim, about kind of remediating or at least paying attention to the dust and the air quality. Have there been any issues around either sound or vibrations? Or particularly with, I'm thinking of the classrooms on this side, and how's that going?
So initially, we, we heard some comments about sound and vibration. I think it's become less of an issue as time has wore on. I think that's partially because a lot of the early work was up against the building, removing trees that were close to classrooms and things of that nature. And we've worked our way backwards towards the actual building site at this point. So it's a combination of things. I think we're getting further away from the building and then folks are getting used to the, you know, sights and sounds of, of a project of this size.
Thank you.
Hey, my pleasure. Kevin?
Obviously, the planning about for all the disruption is obviously monumental. Like we have all the athletic, you know, sports scenes in the spring. You have to make accommodations for that. I was kind of wondering, I assume that for the fall, that there's probably going to be more disruption, you know? And I was just wondering, you know, do we have like a kind of a, you know, like a June plan for like what the fall is going to look like with the construction?
Sure, I think the footprint is kind of what, is what it is. And I'm not a fan of that term, but that statement. But it's, we're not getting any larger than we are now.
Okay.
I don't think we're going to see any more equipment than, than we do now. I think this is kind of at its, as busy as it's going to get in a, in a sense. I think we'll see a lot more deliveries. But Bond has been careful about how they schedule those. And all their deliveries will be planned to occur after Woodville drop off happens. So I think we're, at times, I'm sure, it'll be more disruptive than it is at the current time. But I think they're making a really valiant effort of, of making sure that things sort of stay on an even keel and that we're not overwhelming anybody. So I don't think it's going to, well, the look of it will change. I don't think that the scale of the construction is going to, going to increase. You know, where we see, we'll start to see steel be erected this summer and things of that nature.
Yeah, I had these, I had these visions of like whenever, whatever, that just ramps up. Like right now, it's at the, you know, that it's a solely building process.
Sure.
But it's good to hear that it's not like we're going to expect massively more disruption in the fall.
No, I, I think the worst of it is going to be the, the utility construction that has to happen surrounding the building, which most of, most of that's going to happen this summer while students aren't here in the school. And so it's been well-planned to have a, really a smaller impact than would be during, during the school year.
Yeah, I mean, good for you, I mean, good for you because obviously you have to be planning every year for, you know, your job and, and all the administrators. And now you have this added to that, right?
It's an interesting addition to the, to the everyday demands. But it's, you know, it's exciting and it's, and I'm, I'm learning something, something new every hour. So, you know, I usually say every day, but it's every hour at this point. And I couldn't be more excited about it, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Tom?
Thanks. So Tim, thanks, you know, certainly for everything. You know, you just, just the enthusiasm and the professionalism that you, that you share even tonight and always have, but really, I think is, is, you know, confidence building. And so that's, that's certainly very reassuring. I think also, you, I think I couldn't agree more of the, the, the work of Bond. I mean, we've had some really good, positive experiences with them. Both of my kids were at, were at Galvin at the time of the Galvin project. While there were ups and downs and bumps and bubbles, there always were. But construction, once it got underway, I think, you know, Bond did a pretty quality job of, of, of that, you know, of managing that campus. So I wouldn't think that with you being on top of it and, and Bond back in, back in the game here, that I wouldn't see anything other than, than really the, the type of management, site management that, that we should, that we should see.
Sure.
I think it's probably right, kind of fair to say that there's going to be a level of disruption that we will arrive at and we will stay at a plateau for a long time.
Absolutely.
So it's not going to go up and then down for, for a couple of years.
Right.
We, managing those expectations is, is something that, you know, will be, will be heavy upon your shoulders.
Absolutely. I appreciate your comments, Tom, thank you.
Yeah, I would, so I just had a couple of questions, Tim. And, and thank you for sort of everything, sort of the, the way you stay on top of it. I love the video, it's just been great. I would say I, I really appreciate the work that went into the Woodville drop off, being sort of a Woodville parent, like knowing a lot of people in that space. I appreciate sort of the novel way that it's been approached. I think there was a dual sort of drop off thing that was worked out where some of the smaller folks, K through two, would get dropped normally at the door. And then the older students are allowed to kind of get dropped off and cross with the crossing guard at the crosswalk, which I think has alleviated some of the initial. And so just the, the way the team just can pivot and come up with sort of unique solutions. I, I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. It was interesting, they did, they did two curb cuts. They made sort of an early exit out of the front loop of the high school to the left. And then they, then they did, you know, the other curb cut, which is a little further down. But that, that left-hand turn out to access Farm Street, we're able to put a couple of cones up and force traffic out that way. That way, like you said, the, the parents of older children, third and fourth grade, are able to drop their, their kids off there where they can then cross over to, to Woodville and get quickly over there, which splits the line in half. And that way, we don't have any cars queuing out onto Farm Street, which is sort of a dream scenario. And I think it's on, I think it was unintentional on Bond's part. But it, we've figured out a way to, to make it work perfectly for us. And the, the parents are playing ball, which is great. And truthfully, it's really nice to be able to sit out there at 8:30 in the morning and see all these elementary school kids, you know, laughing and smiling with each other and hopping into school in the morning. So it's kind of a nice way to get the day kicked off, which I've certainly appreciated, that, that change of pace as well.
That's great. To go to the, the air quality at the, the high school, when you were saying like higher quality filters, can I take that to mean sort of that they'll capture a smaller particle matter? Like are they a higher quality that can capture a smaller micron?
Yes, so they're MERV 13 filters.
Okay.
We use MERV 13 filters in our rooftop units already. In, in, in the classroom units, we use MERV 8s. So there are multiple filters in, in the system already. And what they did is they, they fabricated additional exterior sort of slots for these, for these filters to go into, to capture that fine particulate, like you mentioned, make sure that it's not going through our systems and damaging our equipment as well as, you know, not coming into, into the building and folks breathing that in. That is not to say that, that fine particulate doesn't get dragged in on people's feet. It's become a, a much larger challenge to keep this building clean. But, you know, we'll, we're going to do the, the best that we can. We've, we've brought in some new equipment in the past couple of years that, that can do, do the work. And so it's just a little extra legwork on the guys, but they're rising to the occasion and making sure that it's getting done.
That's great to hear. Yeah, I know, I see the, the video and I know that sort of that site prep work, the silica dust that can be caused by that can be a bit of a challenge. And so it's, it's good to know that the extra measures are being taken.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one last thing would be to go back to that video, just a, a request would be, there's one shot of that that I was wishing was a little bit tighter. And it's where we pull back into the neighborhood. If there was, I just have privacy concerns. If when we do that, if we could have just cut it a little bit sooner before you hit the fence.
So there's, there's an additional video that I, I can send out and provide at a future date. Chris Constantine has really refined this flight path and done an oval pattern that shows no abutting property at all.
Perfect.
And that's going to be, that will be automated. So that weekly, that drone will just pop up, make the loop, and do it identical every time. So absolutely, we'll make sure that that's, that that's the, those are the conditions.
Perfect. Not to detract at all from the video that, that we showed, I, I loved it. That was just from a security perspective, privacy, I just saw that. And if we could have, so great to hear that it's already being done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, I'd just like to add, you know, Tim's part of any of our solutions in any of our buildings in almost any program that we're running, right? And so, you know, he, he was kind of exceptional in, in helping with voting. We're talking about graduation, we talked about graduation today, not only here at the high school, but also at, at the Galvin, the end of year ceremonies at the Galvin. And so we're kind of constantly, and Tim is constantly on kind of point with planning, you know, how are we? you know, how are we going to make it work? Do we need police details? How can we help? How can we support? And one of the things that I think Tim has really picked up incredibly well is this kind of forward-thinking, forward-planning. You heard him say in his presentation, "We have this, it's not going to be a problem again," right? And that's something that I think is remarkable and can be believed, right? And so I think we're really fortunate to have you, Tim, so thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Dan.
Much appreciated. And to the high school team that's working here as well, Joe Mulaney is out in the parking lot in the morning and the afternoon. And he's really kind of great, making sure that kids, you know, the construction equipment, they had, one of the trucks was kind of in the street, so the kids, they just walked right in the center of the street, you know, while they're walking up to the upper parking lot. And, you know, Joe was out in the street, you know, directing them back and super helpful. And I think that this is really, I think people are making nice relationships. Jerry Hammersley's made a nice relationship with the high school administrative team. And I think it's, you know, so far, so good. But as Tom said, we're going to be at a point where, you know, we're going to be putting, the COVID project will be done, and then there'll be a new wrinkle and there'll be a new something, right? And so the upper lot where students are currently parking across from Landrigan, that lot is going to be expanded, right? So when they expand that lot, it's going to take some time and space with the construction equipment up there to get that expanded. And they're also going to be, there's talk about how many spots will be added and how will we use all those spots, right? So every little, every little phase of construction, when it changes, it will kind of be a little wrinkle for us to work through. But I think we've done, we've already started talking about the traffic pattern for Woodville in the fall, right? And as construction equipment is kind of entering and exiting in parallel to drop-off, right? What are we going to do? You know, do we kind of modify that and use the front loop and the side loop at the same time? You know, we've talked about a couple of different things. And so these are just a few of the, you know, probably hundred small projects and problem-solving exercises that Tim goes through in the course of a day, so.
I didn't stop the little kids from just staring at the trucks as they go by.
So there's something to that, there is something to that, you know?
Adults, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the children love construction equipment for, I'll give you a parallel example, we do fire drills at Doyle. The fire department always brings more than one truck so that the kids can, you know, get out and meet the firemen and kind of see the trucks. And so it's a, it's a big draw, it's a big draw. We're also, I just want to jump back to the project, we're also in very close contact with the vote, right? And we've learned this week that the entrance and exit down the street here has been tied up with an injunction. And that's supposed to, we should be hearing some information on that in the coming weeks. They hope to have that online mid-May. I don't know if that's going to happen or not. But if that entrance and exit comes online, that's going to lessen the traffic on our side here. So we'll keep you abreast of that, but that's where we're at.
It has been interesting as well, just a comment. The morning traffic out in front of the high school seems to have decreased. I don't know if that's a case of, you know, a larger amount of students getting dropped off earlier. But my normal, I usually arrive between 7:00 and 7:15, and I would usually sit in traffic almost down to Water Street. And it's bizarre that I'm cruising right up Farm Street these days. I don't know if I'm missing it, if it's happening at a different time, but it appears to be the initial growing pains that we had appear to be a little bit relieved, so.
That's great.
Thanks so much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we love when Tim presents. It's like so good, right? It's just, it just gives you a sense of confidence in everything that we're doing. It really does. Other updates, so we've been working on the Policy and Communications Subcommittee to update our religious accommodation policy. And so we've gotten some feedback, and I'm sure that, you know, Kevin will have something to add at the end. I don't want to report too much if you're going to report at the end, Kevin. But is it just to...
Yeah, we can say it now or wait until the end.
Okay. So just a quick is that we're really, you know, we put it on the table, and I think what we're, it's on the table to kind of take feedback, right? To get feedback, make revisions, edits, and take suggestions or comments. And I think we're taking all of the above. And I think that that's going to result in a much improved policy, maybe a more accessible policy. And so I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think that in our last Policy Subcommittee meeting, you know, we've definitely been, you know, having good conversations about the policy, you know, over the year. But I think we kind of had a breakthrough in the last meeting. And I think we really, I think the four of us collectively, you know, have come to an agreement, you know, a basic, solid theme, like of what we want this policy to be. So, and we are still getting some feedback that we are going to be using to help craft the final draft of the policy. So I think that, you know, I'm pretty positive that we will be presenting this to school committee in the future. But I think that at this point, we're in a really good spot, we're in a good place about where we really want this, what we want this thing to look like. I think we're in pretty good agreement with, you know, what we want this to look like at the end. So at this point, we're just integrating certain feedback from community members that, you know, but for the most part, I think we're pretty much there. We just got to really, you know, craft the final, the final language. So, pretty optimistic.
We reached out to religious leaders as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's part of the, yeah, community feedback. And, yeah, I think, I think we're in alignment with a lot of the feedback that we're getting. So, yep.
I want to thank Pete, you know, Kevin, and Ali in the Policy Subcommittee for being so patient with this, right? And so sometimes with policy, some people want to get to done. It's like homework, Ali. And so, you know, it's, I've, we've seen it rushed in the past, right? We've seen, you know, people try to get to done and in haste, you know, they miss opportunities. And I think that, I'm grateful that the group has kind of slowed things down, hasn't rushed, and has said, you know, like, we're going to, we're going to get feedback from everyone, right, that we can, and we're going to look at other model policies from MASCE, and we're really going to kind of chip away. And so, so that's kind of where we're at, very quickly.
Great. Tom?
Is this going to be again further, or are we discussing this now?
We can discuss this now?
I just...
We can discuss this now.
So could I ask then, so from your remarks, Kevin, we're taking it off the table, it's not going to be voted on and discussed later, and...
I was going to take a motion because my Robert's Rules is not really that great. But I thought we could, what was it called? Hold it?
Yeah, we can just postpone it to the next year.
Yeah, my, what I was going to say when we got to the motion later on in the meeting, I was going to make a motion to hold it, to not really, you know, discuss the nuts and bolts of it at this point, but to hold it for a future meeting, just because we really just received some of this feedback, like literally days ago. And, you know, we want to make sure that the final draft of the policy that's going to be discussed is there so that, you know, the whole committee can take a crack at it and offer feedback, so.
No, I, I...
That was a...
No, that's great. And I was just saying, I didn't mean to unbury the headline of... But, no, I think it's terrific, and I couldn't agree with the superintendent's comments more, it's better to get it right than quick.
Right, right.
And I think the community will probably appreciate that, you know, most, so.
Right, I think...
Thank you for doing all that work.
With some other policies, we've been able to get a model policy, get some feedback, get it on the table, and we feel like it's, when we're bringing it, we feel like it's a, it's ready, you know? You know, we brought this and hadn't heard, we were waiting to hear. And so, and we started to get other feedback that really has kind of, I think we've learned a lot. And I think, like I said, I think we're going to be in a better place and kind of more to follow on it. But I think, I think to Kevin's point, the idea of putting something on the table, in the past, what we've done is we've put something on the table, two weeks go by, in the next meeting, any feedback, there's really none, because I think people feel like, you guys, this is, this is it, this is a very good policy. It compares to the MASCE book, the Association of School Committees, has given us feedback, and so we feel like we've, we're in that space. With this, we're going to get there, it's just taking us a little bit longer. And so, but yeah, I appreciate all the work everyone's done. So next up is the FY25 budget update. For those that are watching at home that might have missed town meeting last night, it was an exciting event, a lot happening. So we presented our budget at town meeting, and we kind of, when it became time to, for FinCom to give their feedback, the feedback was, suggested that they made a motion to reduce the budget by $500,000. And so we kind of presented our information, and I think, thank you for standing up and speaking last night as well, and I think, I mean, we need to thank the community really for their overwhelming support. And I think that it's, and this is a budget that really focused on supporting teachers with a new contract, right? That's what this budget was about. And we are super, I could not be more pleased with the support and the fact that we did not need to cut the budget, that the vote went in the other direction, and we're moving forward with the budget as it was presented, which could not be more pleased about that. But more to follow. But that's it for my comments tonight on my agenda.
That was great.
Thank you so much.
I would just add, you know, on the budget, also to thank sort of community members that went out, and just, I don't know if it's been said enough, that thank you to Christine and to Joe, remind me of Joe's last name.
Belandra.
Belandra. I was going to try and say it, but I was going to butcher it, so Belandra. So thank you to yourself and Joe and to Doug and to the principals and to the department heads, like everyone from the administration that sort of fit into it, because I know it was a large process you began it. You're probably going to blink and you'll be getting next year's ready. I feel like that's how it's going to work. But yeah, so just top-down, it really shows sort of that relationship between district, you know, administration, staff, and then the community in the end to sort of bring it all through, so. Yeah. Kevin?
Yeah, I know we always say thank you to the community, we do it all the time, but seriously, thank you to the community. Like, I know the two of you have said this, but, you know, the whole Finance Subcommittee, we were ready to go out, you know, guns blazing, defensive budget. We were all prepped to go, and then we didn't need to. I mean, it was just, like, I was trying to get, I was like, come on, come on, talk, 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 and then people were like, what are you talking about? The community is doing this job way better than any of us could do. So, again, thank you, everyone out there. Thank you very much for supporting the schools, supporting the budget. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. So that's the end of your comments and updates, sorry. Moving on to, so this would traditionally be Chair's comments still as Vice Chair. I'll give some comments on Election Day results. So this past election, I think now, a week ago, this past Tuesday, a week ago today. So it was myself and Melissa, but I talk enough, so Melissa, welcome to school committee. We're really excited to have you. I listened a lot to sort of what you were campaigning on and excited to sort of hear your ideas.
I'm excited to be here.
Awesome.
Welcome.
I like short meetings, so I'm not going to say...
Okay, fair, fair enough.
Well, you didn't come to the wrong...
I'm going to try and keep it short. So thank you, everyone, for coming out and voting, and I really am excited to do some of the work that the school committee does.
That's great. And I think, you know, you've already been hooked on to the MASCE.
Yep, I'm scheduled for training in June, and ethics training I should be able to get done sometime this week.
Perfect.
Is there another training that I should be doing besides those two?
Nope.
Okay.
I will just offer that MASCE as a whole does do a lot of like lunch-and-learn things, like on Fridays and stuff like that, to sort of things, whether it's Chapter 70, or whether it's like library funding, or some stuff that I've found sort of informative through the years that I've served. And it's usually like 45 minutes, good time for Q and A, and just brush up on some things.
All right, great.
Always a good resource to go back to, and I actually also would need to do policy if you want to look something up. You go on their website, you can look at sort of other towns, okay?
Yeah, I've seen the model policies and, yeah.
Awesome, it's a great resource. So moving on is, I think we're going to take a motion on, well, and for those who don't know, last week, we were in negotiations with WA, Unit A Teachers, Teachers Union, and so we had reached an agreement and an MOA with them. Last week, they ratified their contract on Thursday, I believe. And so them having ratified it, it is now up to us to take a vote on the contract and approve it. And so I think, Mr. Markham, you have some motions that we can vote on?
I do, enthusiastically so, Stephen, that's for sure. So what's before us tonight, just as a brief intro, is two documents. One document is the FY24, which is the year we're just about winding down. So there's a document that was, that has a life of the first 12 months of the contract because we were negotiating into FY24. And the second document, and therefore the second motion, would be the second three years of the contract. So as we recall, we shared with the community a number of times, including the cost of the contract over the course of four years, but it's broken into two documents and therefore two motions. So with that, motion number one, I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement between the Wakefield School Committee and the Wakefield Education Association dated April 9, 2024, detailing the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreement for the term September 1, 2023, through August 31, 2024, as presented, and to authorize the members of the Labor Relations Subcommittee and the Superintendent to sign the memorandum of agreement.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Judy, can we do a roll call vote?
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Collaren?
Yes.
Dr. Biscatlow?
Yes.
Motion number two. I move the school committee approve the memo... No?
No, no, it's fine.
I said, woo-hoo!
Oh, I'm sorry.
We should have a toast after this.
But this one's the big one.
This is, yes, this next one's the big one. I was preemptive with getting excited, guys.
So it'll be two dip hoops.
Yes, I'll do a bigger woo-hoo.
Sorry. I move the Wakefield School Committee approve the memorandum of agreement between the Wakefield School Committee and the Wakefield Education Association dated April 9, 2024, detailing the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreement for the term September 1, 2024, through August 31, 2027, as presented, and to authorize the members of the Labor Relations Subcommittee and the Superintendent to sign this memorandum of agreement.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Judy, roll call vote, please?
Yep. Ms. Quinn?
An enthusiastic yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Collaren?
Yes.
Dr. Biscatlow?
Yes.
Kayleen, do it.
Woo-hoo! I'm the only one! That's a lot of, that's a lot of work, so.
Yeah, I do want to just share my appreciation to all of you who work so hard. You know, your endless meetings, I know it was many, many, many months and hours, and just want to share my appreciation. I don't know if I could ever put in that many hours, I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work doing that.
You can.
Tom?
If I just could, really, not to extend the Mutual Admiration Society that we had a little theme going tonight. that we had a little theme going tonight, but certainly to recognize not only everyone here, the subcommittee, entire school committee, the superintendent, business administrator, and Cara, the special ed director, the team that we had put together. It really was a strong collaborative effort. It was, it was some ups and downs, it was some bumps and bubbles. It wasn't always, we weren't always on the same page, but we were always in the same field. So we were in a, we were in a pretty good space. And I think, you know, equally, if not more importantly, to thank the leadership of the W B A and, and the entire membership. That I think that the, that the leader team that, that, that was assembled by the, by, by the teachers, by the U D A members, really represented their cause well. They represented the needs of teaching and learning. More importantly, they represented the needs of the students that were before them. We entrust these, our, our teachers and our educators every day with the most important thing that any of us have is our children and their future. And there's nothing more important that we, as a group of seven and a group of administrators can really do than to support teaching and learning and to support, you know, teachers in their, in their practice and, and, and in their craft. So really, you know, kudos to, to that team. I think we all worked hard. They, they represented well, they, they stood their ground where they needed to. And they, and, and they compromised like we did when we needed to, to get to a, to get to a good place. We needed to balance representing the needs of the schools, the needs of the school district, the, the capacity of the taxpayer with, with most importantly, the, the needs of, of our frontline, frontline staff members who are doing the work that we're all here to support. So I just wanted to add that as, as a couple, you know, comments here that we're winding this, winding this down after a year and a half plus. And just to, just to, to share those thoughts, that this is an exciting time to have this, you know, resolved and, and have it in the, in the V V mirror and look forward to what's next. So thank you to all.
Doug?
Dr. Lyons.
It's okay, that's perfectly fine, I answered both.
Commissioner.
That's a no.
My goodness. The exciting news is that we have six bargaining units to settle contracts with, in the fall.
Yeah.
Right? And so, and so we have seven bargaining units total, right? And so we have, the teachers are one bargaining unit, the Wakefield Administrators Association is a second, Unit C, our paraeducators, and we have clerical, custodians, food service, and our traffic supervisors. But we, teachers are out of cycle with the other six. So we have seven total, the teachers are out of cycle, and then we have six remaining. But we'll, we'll take on the remaining six next year. So get a little break, thank goodness, because I think everyone could, who was negotiating could, could stand for a break and, yeah, so we're, and we're back at it. And, you know, we look forward to it, yeah.
One thing, a question I had for you, Christine perhaps, would be, so we did mention the, the one-year contract was this year, so after it being approved and signed, would be, there would be teacher pay that would be retroactive?
You're asking the number one question that
I figured we might as well get it answered here if possible.
So we are currently working on the retro payments. We've done some analysis, we are working with the town. So the good news is, the town was able to agree to do it on a separate check because there was some tax implications that staff were concerned about, but it will be on a separate check. We are hopeful that it'll be on the next paycheck on May tenth, but we will know more about that tomorrow morning as we've done some testing in our new financial system. But it's looking like it'll be on May tenth, just in time for Mother's Day.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on, off of chair comments and action items, we have budget items.
So all we have tonight is one gift. We have a motion to accept from the Boosters Club for girls lacrosse for an assistant coach. Make the motion.
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $1,200 from the W H S girls lacrosse, a stipend for one assistant girls lacrosse coach for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four spring season.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Judy? Roll call, please?
Yep. Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Collaren?
Yes.
Dr. Biscatlow?
Yes.
Was unanimous. And thank you to the, to the boosters for girls lacrosse. Subcommittee reports, finance and facilities. Mr. Markham?
I know most of the comments about the, the things that would be on our plate have been discussed already, both from Mr. O'Brien's report about high school work and certainly, you know, last night's conclusion of the F Y twenty-five budget, you know, you know, development and plan. But I just, let me just add, I guess, again, to reiterate everything that, that Mr. Fontanella said, that we really, and everything that everyone said, but really we owe the community a great, a great thank you of support and genuine interest in, in advancing, you know, this budget. This budget is truly representative of the appropriate, and certainly, you know, the appropriate wages that we need to support our, our educators and, and our staff across, across all levels. That's the majority of, of the, of the, the vast majority of the increases. And they're, they are appropriately placed there. That there were no, there was nothing more important that we can do than to support the livelihoods and the life, and the, and the advancement of, 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 of our, of our teaching staff. So again, certainly a great, a great, also an appreciation, you know, really to our liaisons on, on the town finance committee. That if, you know, the, you know, the vote, and you mentioned earlier, of course, was, you know, there was a motion brought forward to, to cut the budget and the inside, you know, you know, inside baseball of all of that. But the unit, the, for the finance committee was not unanimous in that there was an eight to five vote to, to, to propose that reduction. And it, it didn't really take hold. And I think that, you know, the town's people spoke. I think that there was a strong level of preparation, both from the administration and from the school committee members, that we, I think we were well prepared on the issues and well prepared on the facts, well prepared on the, the work that we had done in the last year to get ready for, for F Y twenty-five. And, and I think we were prepared for the meeting itself, so. But we do certainly owe some gratitude to our liaisons and finance committee who spoke up on, on our behalf, both last night and at finance committee meetings. And that relationship is critically important to this type of success, so. The end of the day, healthy debate is good. Right? And, and, and we should be taking the feedback, just as the policy subcommittee is, we in the budget subcommittee need to be taking the community feedback and be, and be reflective of that as well, so. Which I think we've done. But thank you to all on, on the, on the F Y twenty-five.
Thank you.
Labor and We're going to, we're scheduling a meeting for, for next week to wrap up a couple of budget items as a subcommittee we haven't actually met since our last meeting, because we were obviously town meeting prep. But we're looking at a meeting for next week to, to wind down F Y twenty-four, to talk about some facilities matters and to open, some conversation about opening twenty-five, now that all the mechanics are done. Thanks.
Great. Labor and personnel, be myself, the update I would give would be, would be the contract that we just, we motion voted on unanimously. Excited to sort of have that behind and, and, and get a breather before we tackle the next sixes, as Dr. Lyons has already put on our horizon. And labor and personnel will, we're trying to schedule a meeting as well for, for next week, just to tie up some loose ends. As some might know, generally after an election, we tend to reorg some of the subcommittees. So it's good to kind of tie up some things, just to leave it neat for any type of adjustment that might happen in those, those subcommittees. Student services.
We have not met since the last meeting, but same thing, I'm going to be setting up a meeting just to kind of tie up everything that we've been working on. And we have a few things in the queue, ready to go in regards to, you know, a, a larger discussion with community members and stakeholders about the possibility of, of late start times. Making sure I'm saying it the right way. Possibility of late start times, not definitely happening, but just really kind of doing that research and looking at community members and stakeholders and, and how it would affect the community. So we have some things in place, ready to go, and would like to get that going before the chair, you know, the subcommittees get changed up and stuff.
Great. Policy and communications, Kevin?
Yeah, so we just discussed the religious commendations policy earlier in the meeting. So, you know, make a motion to hold a discussion of the policy until a future meeting.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Judy, roll call, please?
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Collaren?
Yes.
Dr. Biscatlow?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made, seconded, and voted on unanimously, so we will table that for, or pull it off the table, hold it on the table.
I, I would rather hold it, but
Nope, nope, sorry. Hold it and, to bring it back up possibly in our next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Liaison reports, if any?
So the Human Rights Commission has a very busy May for Asian, American, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. One really fun event that I witnessed last year that they're doing outside this year is the Lion Dance. And so that will be Saturday, May fourth at 12:30, hopefully weather permitting, on the front steps of the B B Library. And many of the, as many students from Wakefield Public Schools who are the actual kids in the Lion Dance costumes, they do a really awesome job. And then this year, they decided to try some various movies they're going to show. And they had to, they have a very small budget, so the, the stuff they're showing is all like public domain type stuff that didn't require them to get like extensive licensing for. So they're going to do an anime film festival on Saturday, May eighteenth, from one to three, at the Americal, focusing on, on Japanese culture. And then they're going to be doing a Thursday movie night right here at the W C A T studio, where you can join in via Zoom. And they're doing that on three different cultures and three different evenings. May sixteenth, and I'll probably pronounce this wrong, they're showing the movie Whale Rider, focused on Maori culture, basically New Zealand. May twenty-third, they're showing Bollywood Beats, focused on Indian culture. May thirtieth, Tehran Blues, focused on Iranian culture. And those will all be, as I said, here in the W C A T studio, where you can watch from home on Zoom.
Cool. And I'll put in another plug, that, that group is still desperate for volunteers to help out. They mention it every meeting, I, I know they're down at least a couple of members, and at some point it makes it hard for them to coordinate events and do other things. So if you know anyone out there in the community who wants to be part of the Human Rights Commission, please reach out to them. Yeah, it's a shame they're down. They're not just raising awareness, but they bring all of these wonderful events to our community to sort of highlight other cultures that sort of exist within our space. Yeah. Okay, no one else? We'll move on to, so Article eleven is our annual committee reorganization. As I said at the start, we are currently without a chair. So we would take motions to nominate a new chair, a new vice chair, payroll signer and warrant signer, payroll signer and warrant signer, we tend to do as one, one individual. And then reappointment of school committee clerk, which is Judy. And so that's the, the role. So with that said, are there any nominations for chair? Tom?
I, I would like to nominate Stephen Ingalls for the position of school committee chair for the term twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second. Okay. Judy, can I, oh, is any other, any other nominations? Sure.
Do you accept the nomination?
You have to ask if you, you have to ask.
We have to ask if people accept it, right?
Yes, okay. Judy, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Collaren?
Yes.
Dr. Biscatlow?
Yes.
Motion's been made, seconded, and unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for thinking I can pull that off. That's going to be great. Second in line, do we have any nominations for vice chair? Kevin?
I would like to nominate Kevin Fontanella for the position of vice chair.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Kevin? Would you accept?
There's a little hesitation there.
Who, me?
Judy, roll call, please?
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Collaren?
Yes.
Dr. Biscatlow?
Yes.
Motion's been made, seconded, and unanimous. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you.
Again, yay, congratulations. And nomination for payroll signer.
Best job member.
It is, because you get to go in the central office, it's pretty fun. You should bring cookies, though.
Sometimes. It's not a requirement.
Kevin?
I would like to nominate Pete Davis as the payroll signer and warrant signer for the school committee.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Pete, how do you feel about that?
Sure.
The banals are still a requirement.
Judy, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Collaren?
Yes.
Dr. Biscatlow?
Yes.
Motion made, seconded, and unanimously voted on. Last one would be the reappointment of the school committee clerk, Ms. Bouddier.
Yes, Pete? I nominate Judy Bouddier for the position of the school committee clerk.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? No? Judy, can we have a roll call vote?
Didn't ask me if I wanted it.
You're still online with us, I took that as an affirmative, I'm sorry.
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Ms. Collaren?
Yes.
Dr. Biscatlow?
Yes.
Okay. Motion been made, seconded, and unanimously voted on. The last point in that is just, as we had already mentioned, the charting the course, which is good for, for new members. I enjoyed that training, I'm sure you will also. Future dates and agenda items. Let's see. One thing I would mention in that is that one of the future dates and agenda items will be the reorganization of the subcommittees, as well as liaison positions. I'll send out to the group sort of a polling list, just asking for like, you know, one, two, three order, and we'll try and sort of fit people as best we can into what, where their interests may lie.
Do I do that for the next meeting?
Yes, I will send it out between now and then, and hopefully we'll have something organized and, and put together for the next meeting. As we already sort of said, I think everybody kind of has things going on within their subcommittees, and so I don't want to hold off too long on allowing people to sort of reorganize and figure what, how the schedules fit together. Okay. Next School Committee meeting will be May 14th. I, I like the, I like the 7:00 PM meetings that Amy's sort of instilled, it seems to work out better, so I think we'll, we'll hang on to that unless anyone has any objection. And then are there any additional future agenda items beyond what we already have on the docket?
Mr. Markham? I'd like to see if the Superintendent would concur, but if we could invite Dustin O'Brien back now at sort of the end of the year, we had him in end of August or early September, just to see how we're winding, how we're winding down, how, how the year went in food service, what are the type of things that might be in store for, for next school year?
Yep.
Doesn't have to be May 14th, but certainly before, before the end of June, if that's possible.
We can absolutely do that.
I think it was Kevin and then Pete.
An update on the 7th grade accelerated math, the honors math program.
Doug, correct me if I'm wrong on the date, I believe it's May 14th. Megan Webb can come and cover a couple of Galvin-specific topics, including that.
Also, we talked about the yonder pouches.
Yep.
Math, and I think that there was-
Honor roll.
A question about honor roll.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and so-
Strike all the iron.
She's gonna need her own like agenda bullet item thing.
Yes, 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 yes. She'll be here, she'll be here for two hours. No. Yeah, so those are things that I think we said we would get back to, and it is spring, we are, you know, it's, we're gonna be, we're heading and speeding into the high school graduation.
Yep.
So, but yeah.
Great.
My item was the same as, as Kevin's.
Okay, wonderful.
My item actually isn't that.
Yeah.
But the science curriculum, is that coming up?
Yep, so they, we, I think it was, I'm trying to think when the last time Lindsay and, I think it was Fe, was it February? All the months are blowing, I think they were here in February or March, actually it ended up being March.
It was March.
So they did kind of a midpoint update, but we had planned to have them back in, in June, just to kind of say, here's where we are at this point, is that, does that sound okay?
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, and then they'll be back next year as well.
I didn't know if this was just a list for the next meeting or upcoming.
Upcoming, I think, usually, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that is on the radar now, for June, thanks.
We couldn't have short meetings if we hit all of those lists. Try and add a few at a time.
Fair enough.
Anybody else? No? Okay. School Committee comments.
One of the things I probably should have mentioned earlier, but I'll mention it now, is one of the positive things in the new school contract is, is our time on learning, and it was a, something that our administrators really were focused on as part of the new contract. And so next school year, I know we'll be adding five minutes at all levels at the end of the day, and I, I know part of the contract is to work on how that will be used throughout the day to make it productive. And then I know we also have taken back three of those half-days, and those will be full school days for, for kids, so people probably saw that on the calendar that Assistant Superintendent Moro put out, and then the last, I think that was, there was maybe one more I was thinking of, but, just, I think those are all positive, and, you know, we'll start to see that. And then I did get some feedback, and Superintendent Lyons got it as well, or I sent it off to him, there were some students who were doing track and field, and they ran into some kind of transportation issues. Our buses aren't available until after elementary school drop-off ends, so one of the things when we get into looking at later school start times is, you know, this is with an earlier school start time, this, this is problematic for some of these kids to get to their sporting events, so that's only be, gonna become more problematic, so it's just something that we'll have to take into consideration as we do that. I know they figured something out, but these, these poor parents were at a meeting, and they had to go at the last minute, figure who was gonna drive little, little buses for 15 kids each and scramble to, to get kids to, to these, to these meets on time. And, you know, we definitely want to do anything possible to make the life of parents easier and not have them rushing at the last minute to try to figure out how their kids are gonna get to sporting events.
But it's, if I can speak to that-
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not only to make the parents' life easier, if kids are scheduled to be at a track meet and run at a specific time, it's our responsibility to get them there.
Yeah, sorry, that's what I, that's what I meant, is-
You know, and, and so-
Without the parents having to go, run around with their heads kind of-
So, so we, we got, we, we heard about that, unfortunately, we were able to figure something out, but I think when we got that, we were really concerned just about the messaging behind that, right? Because the last thing we want, the last thing we want is obviously kids transporting themselves, that's a non-starter, right? Or, you know, giving parents no notice. I mean, you guys are all parents, we're, we're parents ourselves, right? And so we've been on the receiving end of no notice, you get the call from your son or daughter, "Oh, Mom, uh, you know, Dad, I gotta go, I gotta go net, like, I need to go," it's a, you know, we have no, we should not be creating that level of stress with kids or with families, right? Things are difficult enough, just kind of managing all the commitments in a, in a busy family setting. Anyway, I'll leave it there.
Yeah, so just something for us to keep in mind, as we look at later school start times, and also maybe the next time we have Brendan in here to talk about athletics.
I will say, not just athletics, but other afternoon commitments did come up from student voices when we started this, sort of the conversation on later start times, so I, I know that it is part of that. As, as you had said earlier, Eileen, like, there are a lot of stakeholders when you sort of start, it's like layers on an onion.
We wrote out the list of like, everyone we need to contact, it's a long list.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
And it was on, it was on the list, I just, it was interesting that, you know, this happened, that I'm like, wow, if, if we had later start times, they'd never, they would have been there at 5 o'clock.
I know, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, just my comments. Anyone else? Tom?
Just, just to, again, congratulations to Melissa and-
Thank you.
For your reelection, Stephen. I know there was a hard-fought battle, we were, we were behind the involved all the way.
Very contentious.
But, but, but in all seriousness, it is, as we all know, it's, it's a lot of work, and to put yourself out there again, as we've all have done, but thank you for, for that, and congratulations on the reelection, and congratulations to Stephen and Kevin on, on leading us for the next year. And that's, that's, that's important work, it's gonna be a busy year, a different set of busy, but a busy year too, so congratulations, and thank you for taking on that, that leadership task.
Absolutely. One thing I would mention, which is, I guess tangentially school, is this past weekend, there were a number of youth groups in town, I know there was like one, there was like a Cub Scout group, there was the Friends of the Lake Kona Power Group, and there was the cleanup, the Wakefield Warriors Cleanup Crew. So there were just countless sort of youths, and, and kudos to the Science Department at the Galvin who gave some of these kids extra credit for picking up trash around our community. I mean, just amazing stuff. But I saw the stuff, I happen to be with the, the Warrior Group that was at the Galvin, and they just pulled out a ton of stuff, sort of from the bike trail and around the middle school, and I've seen pictures from the lake, and they did a similar thing. So just when people talk about sort of some of the, the good things that are happening around Wakefield, you know, we are sort of helping to, to craft kids to kind of give back to their community. And at least my kids didn't do it dragging their feet, and I don't, I don't think anybody's, I saw a lot of smiles on, on some photos, and so that's, that's very positive. And so appreciate sort of the parents and the volunteers that make that happen, because it's always great when we give back. And that's all I had. That being said, I, I think we are done for the evening, is there a motion for adjournment?
Move that the School Committee adjourned its meeting of Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Julie? Judy?
Judy.
Did we appoint Julie?
Right.
Judy, you're out, where's you?
Okay, I'm gonna guess here, because I can't see you all.
Same order, we haven't moved.
Ms. Quinn?
Yes.
There we go, Ms. Quinn. Mr. Markham?[1731.58]